I would like to call this workshop a regular meeting to order. Our quorum is present and the time is four. I just lost it. Four thirty-eight. Notice that this meeting was posted in the time and manner required by law. At this time, we will move into the workshop portion of our meeting, and I would like to ask Dr. Largent to share an overview of the agenda in order for us to plan for our meeting.
Well, tonight, we're going to have the Dr. Joe Waldron Show. He's going to discuss budget workshop and also talk about some surplus facilities.
Okay.
Dr. Waldron?
Joe, would you like to join us at the podium?
I will. Are you here? I'm ready. What's first budget?
Hey. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Wiley, members of the board. Happy to be here to start the series of meetings according to our budget calendar, where we discuss various checkpoints of developing the budget for next fiscal year. Tonight, we're going to talk about how we build a budget and some various aspects of that budget in order to equip our learners for their brightest future. So, we're going to go through the couple of slides that the Texas Association of School Business Officials have put together about a survey they did statewide, and then the timeline, some assumptions we're going under, some key metrics you see me talk about every year about this time, and then what we're doing moving forward. So, these two graphs are pretty telling. In the upper left-hand corner, there's anticipated budget cuts. So, this is from three hundred districts in the state. So, it's a pretty good sample size of the eleven hundred total. You can see the three categories. Yes, we're going to have to make significant cuts. We'll make minor cuts, no. And the majority of that pie graph is not green. And then the lower right-hand has to do with pay increases, where most people are considering a pay increase, but it's likely going to come out of some sort of cut. Very few have significant resources to do a pay increase all by itself in the regular budget planning cycle. These two graphs come from that same survey of three hundred districts. And you can see in the upper left-hand corner, there's a comparison between last fiscal year and the one we're currently in. The one we're currently in is on the right with more red in it. The red means that they anticipate to end in a deficit. When I answered this for us, I put about even, just because it's really too far away for us to be able to forecast that, but that's kind of how I feel like it's going to go. There are some factors that could influence that either way. That can still happen, but I thought I'd throw it in there. You can see in the prior year, there was much more confidence in fiscal year twenty-three to end in a surplus for school districts versus a deficit. So, the climate has significantly changed in our state. The bottom right-hand is a complicated graph, but I'll try to sum it up. It's actually summed up in the text. But about fifty-five percent of districts say that they expect to make cuts while still adopting a deficit, which means that most districts are not to the point where they're going to cut so drastically to impede the regular educational program or what they can provide in the classroom, which they think is best. I would say that the narrative that you're going to hear today from me is somewhere along those lines also. We're going to have a deficit when we get to the end, but we're not going to continue to cut our entire holistic budget to the bare, bare bones. I don't think our district can handle that. That is certainly up for debate and conversation, but I wanted to throw these out because it's pretty telling just where the state's going. Yes, sir.
Is it the ESSER fund that you're giving us the deficit budget?
Not necessarily, no, sir. It's really the high change in inflation over the course of several years, competitive salaries that districts are offering, and the general loss in ADA creates less money in a school district, just the way schools are funded now. You put all those things together. I think some of it might be ESSER-related. Certainly, some of ours will be ESSER-related, but I would not say that it's a majority. Most people have done well to plan.
Is the ADA mostly west of thirty-five or across the state?
I don't have a graph or a metric to actually answer you, but I would like. That's a good question. The three hundred districts that responded are probably pretty close to the I-35 corridor, but I don't even know that to answer. We didn't get the location of the three hundred districts that supplied those answers.
Do you know if the conversation of enrollment for funding compared to attendance, is that still on the table? Do you feel like? I mean, I know we're like done for a couple of years, but...
We're done until January, actually.
Okay.
They'll all go back to Austin in January and start another legislative session. In the interim, so far, I haven't heard any interim charges that relate to any kind of task force being put together or a special interest group of legislators to investigate that very thing. That has not come back up. I would. Dr. Largent and I have actually talked about this. We feel like the next legislative session will be charged with school funding again. And then after the runoffs in May, we'll kind of know what direction that's going. But until then, it's all speculation.
And I can tell you, last year in the budget cycle, most superintendents were thinking there is no way with the billions and billions of dollars that the state has in their coffers that they could get away with not giving schools more money on the basic allotment. And they proved us wrong. They did. They kept it. And they're still sitting on billions of dollars, of taxpayer dollars, that they are not releasing to public schools. And it's all over the voucher issue. And they basically held public schools hostage over that. So, our kids are paying for that this year. And, you know, you would think they couldn't go two sessions without doing that. So, we'll see what happens in the next legislative session. But I don't see how they can get away with it again. But they proved me wrong one time, so we'll see.
We shall. Pretty much as a regular course of information, I give you a snapshot of where we are in the budget timeline. So, in April, generally, we are discussing with the executive team and with the board kind of where we are right now to the best of our ability. So, we're about just a couple of steps into the process, really. So, some current assumptions. Now, each one of these pictures represents, hopefully, something that doesn't even surprise you. We're going to prioritize the needs of our students and staff. The charge this year has been. Our tagline has been, we're going to staff our campuses based on the number of students that are present at that campus. Our staffing level and our student enrollment kind of have to level off. That's that next one in the middle at the top. And then, we want to retain our staff. So, the culture and climate of our school district is definitely a part of this process, even though culture and climate may not necessarily always have to do with money. ESSER funds are going away. Property values have been increasing, but that will level off. And then, our ADA has declined. There's an actual slide about those things. But those are some things that have been, that we predict to be true and are part of these conversations when we have them. So, some key metrics. So, on the right, we'll start with expenditures. On the right, the major buckets that we have are travel, contracted services, debt service and capital outlay, and then personnel. Now, those are not to scale. Personnel represents eighty-one or eighty-two percent of our budget, and the other things represent a much smaller chunk. But those are the main things in the expenditure world. Then, on the revenue side, enrollment drives the beginning of ADA, but ADA is how we're paid. And then, any kind of exemptions, which dramatically impacted the way AISD is funded this last year with the homestead exemption changing. And then, how property value grows this year. I haven't asked Gary Ernest just yet what he predicts, but I would imagine it would be lower than last year. It's going to level off. So, this is a real dramatic slide. Every year, we keep adding another year to it. And you can see the difference pre-COVID to now isn't approaching two thousand students. That's a lot. And our district footprint, our district staff should match the. All that's got to match. Because they're directly related to each other. So, there's ADA. It's the first four, six weeks of each year. Our ADA will drop below thirteen thousand before we end fiscal year twenty-four. Pretty substantial. This is kind of an indication of how much money that might represent. Now, not all students in the funding formula generate sixty-one hundred and sixty dollars. But that's pretty much where they all start. So, some students actually generate more money than that based on weighted things. But. So, that's actually a pretty conservative thirteen million dollars. It's a lot. Property value growth, you can see it leveling off for tax year twenty-three. I imagine it continues to level off. The little drop in twenty-three, I'll remind you, is substantially due to the homestead exemption moving to a hundred thousand dollars. And we'll see that. I imagine that the twenty-four tax year, the next bar that would go to this graph, will be just above six billion. So, as best we can estimate. So, the next slide is just looking at money coming in. So, two years ago, the red and the blue were switched. Our local tax revenue filled up the bucket first. I've given you this analogy before, but the state of Texas looks at Abilene ISD and says, here's your bucket, and if we fill it up, that's how much money you get to fund your school district. The first money that goes in the bucket is always our tax dollars. So, every taxpayer in Abilene ISD goes in the bucket first, and the state fills up the bucket last. So, the argument all the time in Austin used to be that the state wasn't doing their fair share because the local taxpayer was the blue. It used to be the blue side, a majority of our funding. And now, it's flipped because of the homestead exemption and tax compression. So, funding public education from the state point of view continues to grow, and they keep making action that makes it more expensive for the state to do it, which is probably where it should be. Local tax revenue should be supplemental to state money. That's an opinion.
But the state is kind of collecting credit for increasing funding because of this.
Correct.
But it's really not because we haven't increased the funding per kid.
So, that is a very. Simply put, yes, but that is a very complicated question. In the public's eye, the way they put it out, the way the state has put it out there publicly, the increase in funding includes the homestead exemption money and the tax compression money and things that don't ever get to the classroom. So, it's. The way to impact the classroom is through the basic allotment. Lots of talk about that last legislative session that Dr. Largent alluded to, where billions was left on the table. Good question. So, I'm almost through here, but just showing you annual funding per student. This is. There was a similar graph put together for the statewide per-student average. So, we developed one just for Abilene ISD. You can see that the funding per kid actually goes all the way up and touches that ten thousand dollar mark. Some of that is a change in the gray and the red, which is state and local funding. Some of that has to do with the safety allotment. Some of that has to do with changing weights for different programs. But generally speaking, you can see twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, they're not that much difference for the last several years. So, that. If you take this fiscal year, twenty-four, and the per pupil is directly correlated to a loss in students because you make the denominator smaller and your per pupil will get bigger. If we didn't. If our enrollment were flat, that twenty-four would look just like twenty-three. Does that make sense? So, it's pretty significant when you look at the whole five-year point of view, but not too much difference over the last couple of years. So, this is just a summary of ESSER. We've showed you this before, but all this money has dwindled down to about five, six million dollars or so left to spend, which we've been. That was just for the whole fiscal year. We have been spending that. One hundred percent of the ESSER money will be spent by August thirty-first. We'll not spend any money in ESSER in fiscal year twenty-five. Just to show you, this is fiscal year twenty-four, and the big blue bar is payroll. So, I told you earlier that a majority of the money that we spend, it wasn't to scale. This is more to scale. You can see seventy-nine percent of our budget. And this is just the general fund is in payroll. And then, those other very small categories. That should come as pretty normal information. Twenty percent of our budget is not payroll. So, this is the view of payroll over time. The difference between twenty and twenty-one was that was the year in the summer COVID had hit, and we made a decision to add a bunch of support services. And it was about seventy-one or seventy-seven. I don't remember that right off the top of my head, but seventy-some positions were added between those two payrolls. And we've been. Over time, you can see the effort that's been done to shrink our staff. And that's evident. And that each one of those years, a pay increase was applied. So, payroll actually goes up as the staff goes down too. But that's a pretty good trend line. It's what we need because that's the same thing our ADA and enrollment are doing. This is pretty telling for all the little buckets. So, red is contracted services. That's anybody we have a contract with to provide something for our district. A simple example of that would be like frontline services. We pay a contract for that service. Then, supplies and materials, the dark gray. And travel and other miscellaneous is the light gray. There are differences here. Some of it has to do with reserve money. Reserve money for insurance, reserve money for special programs. But for the most part, you can see that these are all also trending down generally. A couple of them are not, and they have reasons. So, this is it. This is what we're still thinking about. So, reducing the rest of the way of the ESSER bucket. That's the first one, the twenty-four, twenty-five. Sorry. Yes, the twenty-four, twenty-five, I said it right. Compensation plan. Tax rate compression. Actually, don't know that just yet. The template to do it hasn't been put out. What our values will be, sustainable budget plan, shrinking our operational footprint. There are probably several other things we could put on this list, but they all impact our budget. What questions do you have for me so far?
What do you think our budget is going to look like? Hundred and forty-nine million or a hundred and nineteen million? Which direction we go?
I think our budget will be in the hundred and forty to hundred and fifty million dollar range for the general fund again. Probably on the lower end versus.
Close to last year's budget.
Hundred and forty-nine. It will go down. Needs to.
Is there a formula that you use, for instance, like to know what we need to get down to on staffing for those two thousand students we've lost? How do you figure out what that means? Is there a formula where two thousand students gone that we need to get rid of a certain amount of?
Allison may be the best to answer that question, but yes, there are formulas that are used.
Yeah, you don't have to. I just figured I might later get with you.
It's tricky because it depends on where the students end up. So. You would think we'd be able to reduce a whole lot more, but because we have so many campuses, the spread out of those students doesn't always work out the way it needs to to lose a teaching position.
Okay.
What other questions do you have for me on this subject? Got another one to talk to you about.
There's not any questions for Joe on the budget? Joe, you can. Would you like to move on to talk to us about our surplus facilities?
Yes, so in this, I'm not going to bury the lead. Right off the bat, here's the recommendation that's in your board packet this month. You're aware that this has been an ongoing conversation with surplus. Tonight, we're going to make a recommendation to you. You're welcome. There's no action tonight. You're welcome to give me feedback about this recommendation if you'd like. We'll review the steps that are possible to take for these two properties. I will tell you, based on what we just alluded to, Abilene ISD having so many properties that are not at full capacity or full functional capacity or are idle with nothing happening in them is an operational vacuum that's sucking resources. What Allison just said is a true, true thing. If you take thirteen elementaries, four middle schools, however many, however you want to categorize our secondary high schools, you put them all. And how many empty seats are available in order to fill them? It creates inefficiencies. And if you shrink, the number of empty seats gets more and more efficient, and we do more with our resources that way. It's just pure logic. And they're hard conversations, I don't deny that. When a facility is idle, like tonight, these are idle facilities. It's not. It's still maybe challenging, but it's not like the idea of talking through shrinking campuses that actually have students at them today. That's a different kind of hard. But tonight, we're going to talk about two idle facilities, Fannin and Woodson. So, Fannin is. The part in red is what we still own. The rest of that property has been. Our ownership has been transferred to someone else, the city mainly, for the big green part. And then, there's a clinic right there on the east side of that property. This property has storage in it. That storage can be moved elsewhere that is more operationally efficient. And the facility itself could be. You have options. We'll talk about those options in a minute. The other one is Woodson, early childhood. This one, we get calls pretty regular about whether or not we're interested in still owning this property or selling it. Right now, Woodson, early childhood, this one that's on North Tenth. Its address is North Ninth, actually. It. There's no programming in it right now. There is a little bit of items stored there, but for the most part, it is one hundred percent vacant. And there are three sections of this property, a newer section, a middle year, and then an older section. And this has historical significance in Abilene. The facility itself might actually do some good for another organization. I don't think Abilene ISD would put programs at that facility. It would take a significant investment to do that. So, the rationale of why we're bringing those recommendations to you are the things we've already talked about, efficiency and reducing our footprint. So, those arrows represent reducing, getting down to a footprint of operation that makes sense. What you can do is you can, as a board, you can declare these facility surplus, and then you have options, sale, lease, and governmental exchange. Exchange isn't the right word there, but governmental swap with a government agency. Most recently, and I'll go through these slides, but there are steps that we would go through in order to sell a property, and it's all through a bid process. We recently did it with Taylor Elementary School. Those same steps we could follow for either one of these or both of these buildings. That step includes authorizing the actual. So, this is where action would start by the board. A resolution would get considered by the board to actually authorize the initialization of selling the property. And then, step two is to get an appraisal and a survey because we have to sell the property or advertise it for fair market value. There are considerations in that. A sealed bid process in which we would collect bids and then read them and then authorize the sale after that. Following those, we go through the regular process like as if you were purchasing a home where the deed gets changed over. We give them the keys to the property and all that stuff. That is really the end. So, that real estate transaction is governed by. Would be in partnership with a leasercrass, our attorney, and we would follow each step along the way. The board would be involved in the initialization and the resolution to actually sell it at the end, which you did at Taylor. Remember, you initialized it, and then we came with the bids back, and ACU was the ultimate awardee of that. So, that is pretty much where we are. Fannin and Woodson at this point. What questions do you have for me about this? Do you feel comfortable us bringing those resolutions to move forward? Do you have different ideas for me? I don't think this is the end of the conversation either as far as what properties are sitting idle and could be sold.
Has the city shown any interest in getting Fannin Elementary?
That question has.
They have the part.
That question's been asked, and the response was that not at this time.
They don't want to do the asbestos is what they don't want to do.
Likely so. So, that is. So, you know, that is another option I think we could explore is, you know, Fannin. We could invest in bringing Fannin to the ground. I don't know how that would look. That's certainly not outside the realm of possibility, but it would. Mr. Enriquez brought. What you brought up would be a part of that. We'd have to abate the whole building first.
Do we still have it insured?
Yes, sir. It's insured based on it being vacant. So, it's not insured at the same as an occupied building, but it is insured.
So, is it insured with all the other?
Yes, sir.
So, you couldn't say, well, we're going to drop the insurance at Fannin and at Woodson?
We can't legally not insure it.
Right, okay.
We can insure it at a different capacity, but not insured. Correct.
Has there been any communities by Woodson that have shown any interest in taking over?
I've had a few calls about Woodson, yes. Actually, spoke to a lady last week who mentioned she might attend. She not here tonight to hear how this goes.
Because we have a good gym. The gym was built. It's probably fifteen years old now. But we also have a middle section that was built about fifteen years ago.
Right.
In good shape.
Yes, sir.
The original building is a little weak, but there's some good parts to it.
Yes, sir. I think it would do someone well. I think it'd be a good facility for somebody.
Facilities like that, do we have to keep any utilities up on what?
Correct. We still keep utilities available. They're generally not on in case a leak happens or anything like that, but they are available at the site. Woodson and. Both of these facilities have been the victim of vandalism and burglary and copper, things like that. And we do our best to catch them. The APD cooperates with us and tries. How are you feeling about it? Sir?
When would you like us to bring that forward onto the agenda?
So, I would bring it next month if you're all right with it. I didn't. I can move at whatever pace y'all want, though. It is okay with me.
Next month works great. Let's move forward.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Joe? Then that will conclude our workshop items. Does anyone? Well, obviously, I don't think we have any more questions, Joe, but I guess if we do, we can get in touch with you.
I am available.
We're going to see you here in a little bit. And we'll now move to closer. And we'll now move to class session, which will be held under the provisions of Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, including but not limited to Section 551.071, Section 551.072, Section 551.074, Section 551.076, 551.082, and Section 551.0821. The time is 5:08. The board will now reconvene in open session. The time is 5:57, 58, let's make that 58. We thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us tonight. At this time, we would respectfully ask that you turn off the sound of your cellphones, and may I remind anyone wishing to adjust the board that they must have filled out a public comment card before the start of this public portion of tonight's meeting, indicating the agenda item that they want to talk about. As your board trustees, we are here to set goals for the district, listen to reports presented by the superintendent and his designees, approve and review the budget, approve certain personnel appointments and contracts, and make policy for the district. Management is a responsibility of the superintendent. It's the board's responsibility to govern the affairs of the district and ensure that the district is moving forward to meet, in meeting the vision and goals that are set on an annual basis. Meeting times for board meetings are posted on the AISD website, www-abileneisd.org, and the public is always invited to attend. This time, I would like to ask Ms. Allison Camp to come forward and lead us in the invocation and pledges. She's not in here yet. Anyone want to fill in? Did we see her? Has, is she's here? I've seen her. I'm very sorry about that, Allison. We are just really breaking molds here. There he is.
That is pray.
Dr. Gus is not, Gus is feeling well.
Father, we're thankful always for life and for health and for the way that you manifest yourself. I thank you for the privilege that we have to honor you and to serve you, and by serving others as we do in the school district, and we're thankful for the time that we have tonight, tonight, to recognize those involved in, in, with our children, and we pray especially today for our board members as they deliberate about important decisions regarding our children in this district, and pray that you would guide us, guide our conversation, Father. May you be honored in all that we do, in Jesus's name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
We will now move to item C, Board Superintendent Announcements. Let the official minutes reflect that all of the board members have met or exceeded the required continuing education hours, except for Mr. Zeller. And what are we going to do? Kick him out? We will miss him. He has not filed to run again, so I don't blame him. Dr. Largent, do you have any announcements?
The only announcement I have is touring Tuesday. Tomorrow will be at Martinez, and, correct? You gave me that look like I was wrong. Okay. So we'll hopefully see you there. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Darren Cox had told me that he has an open house at Hartford, Hartford on Thursday night. Thursday, 3:30 to 7:00 is when his open house is over there.
That's Thursday?
Yes.
Thank you. 3:30 to 7:00. That's at Hartford?
Yes.
Thank you, Rodney. So now, we're just going to move on to item five, recognitions. First person up is Mr. Jay Ashby.
All right, good evening. I am here to introduce an awesome group of kids and recognize our Adams UIL Film Team. So, with us tonight, we have the whole team. We have, and you guys wave when I say your name, Nehemiah Dottery, Zach Kite, Jackson McIntyre, Noah Rangel, and our Oscar snub, DA Crow. So, for the first time, I think, ever, we've had a team make it all the way to the state UIL Film Competition, and it actually culminates into a film festival in Austin, and the, this team won the silver medalist in the narrative competition for divisions 1A through 3A. So the, the state runner-up in, in that division, and it's a fantastic film. We're not going to show it tonight, but I encourage you to go onto YouTube. Nightwalker was the title of the film. It's an excellent piece of film that, that was really high level, and, and I think it had, it was as good as any that I saw from some of the, from some of the winners. And so, one cool thing is that they are all coming back next year. So they're, they're trying to go for the, the gold next year, and so if y'all will help me congratulate them. And then, last but not least, their amazing coach, Karen Batson, who's been doing the UIL Film at Adams for a long time, yes, and has done, put together a ton of fantastic films, and this is her highest performing team ever. We got to give her a round of applause. Ready for a picture?
Yes.
Here we go. Okay, Mrs. Wiley, tell you what, I will move. Yeah, come on. Y'all are, y'all are good in the back. Excellent, on three. One, two, three. And one more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thought for me, if you would. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alyssa Kipps and J. Warren K. Ashby is their director. And next is Mr. Clay Johnson, Executive Director of Fine Arts.
Going out of order.
You're going next. Purchasing Award of Merit given to us by Dr. Joe Warner.
Thank you. We have a few still arriving, so we're going to go out of order. Thank you for adjusting. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to highlight the first of what will likely be many times I get to stand in front of you and honor parts of our finance team. This particular, tonight, is the Purchasing Award of Merit. So I'd love for Lisa Metcalf to join me up here. Where are you? I don't get to just talk about you all by myself. Bring your plaque with you, please. Come on. It's exciting. Beginning in 2009, the Texas Association of School Business Officials began this award, and they sponsor it each year as part of the Tasbo State Engage Conference. This year, Lisa Metcalf and many of her team right back there submitted an extensive application to the, to the Texas Association of School Business Officials for consideration to be honored at the state conference, in which seventy-six other districts were honored. In my opinion, I think you might agree, if you ever spent some time with Lisa and her team, Abilene ISD is truly blessed with an incredible purchasing team that take fantastic care of us. The Award of Merit is based on purchasing guidelines identified by the Texas Education Agency Financial Accountability System Research Guide, and best practices in purchasing is identified by the State Legislative Budget Board. This fall, Lisa and many others who helped her, but Lisa did a lot of the heavy lifting here, worked hard to get forty-three separate documents submitted as part of the application. It's an enormous packet. Included in those were organizational charts, training certificates for each of her staff, board policies, audit findings, agreements with cooperatives, vendor feedback, and much, much more. To say it was a huge application would be a dramatic understatement. The purchasing team over, has over a hundred and fifty years of experience in Abilene ISD alone, and it shows. Our purchasing department has a leader who loves her people, loves Abilene ISD, and loves her work. On a personal note, I just have to express to you just how much Lisa means to me. She is literally the foundation we stand on. Many of those people back there would say the same thing. She has tremendous knowledge and integrity. You never have to wonder if Lisa and her team will take care of it, because they do. Whether it is getting water to a facility, Jay, getting water to a facility that may have lost water things to a construction crew, or receiving millions and millions of dollars of goods every year, or just showing up when a member of her team needs a little bit of help, Lisa is an incredible person, and I'm proud to be her friend. Congratulations to you. And that team of people on the back row right there.
Joe, want to stand?
So we'll make them all take a picture, huh?
Yes.
Yes.
Takes the team.
Yes, we will.
All right, y'all are all good. Nice smiles, everybody. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Stay there.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Next, we have Region 14 Tepson of the Year with Ms. Kada.
So, tonight, we would like to recognize two of our Abilene ISD campus administrators. Unfortunately, they're not here at this time, but we would like to recognize Leslie Roberts, who is Principal of Taylor Elementary. She has been named the 2024 Region 14 Tepson of the Year by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. Members from the twenty TEPSA regions across the state annually honor a colleague for their outstanding service to the association. Award recipients must be committed to advancing the principalship and the association, as well as serving as a voice for Texas students. In addition, Hillary Hernandez, Assistant Principal of Dias Elementary in Abilene ISD, has been named the 2024 Region 14 Assistant Principal of the Year. The peer-based award recognizes assistant principals from the twenty TEPSA regions across the state for their commitment to student learning as evidenced by exceptional school leadership. Both Mrs. Roberts and Mrs. Hernandez will be recognized at the TEPSA Awards Dinner on June 12th at the Round Rock Kalahari. Please join me in congratulating both Mrs. Roberts and Mrs. Hernandez.
Kada, do you want, can I go ahead and just, do you have a principal of your?
That was, that was it.
That was it. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, just in time. Mr. Clay Johnson, would you join us? He's the Executive Director for Fine Arts. Welcome.
Good evening. For all the students being honored, would you go ahead and step forward for me, please? Tonight, I have the honor to recognize members of our speech and debate programs from Abilene High School in Adams that have achieved state-level accomplished achievements this year. From Abilene High School, we have Ms. Mo Carroll. Mo is a senior at Abilene High and is a two-time UIL state qualifier in congressional debate. This year, she placed eighth and narrowly missed the final round. Mo also competes in persuasive extemporaneous and CX debate, for which she and her partner were the first alternates to state this year. Also from Abilene High, we have Ms. Laney Mars. Laney is a freshman at Abilene High and qualified in domestic extemporaneous for the Texas Forensic Association State Tournament. This year, she placed twenty-first out of over a hundred competitors. Laney also competes in congressional and CX debate, for which she was an alternate to the state-level competition. From Adams, we have Mr. Gavin Hale. Gavin is a senior at Adams and made it to the Super Congress Finals round this year, in which he won third place overall. He has qualified for the state congress competition for four years, and this is the second year for Gavin to qualify for the final round. Also from Adams, we have Mr. Tristan Reyna. Tristan is also a senior at Adams and made it to the Super Congress Finals round this year and earned the distinction of Outstanding Presiding Officer after leading the final session. This is Tristan's second year to advance to the state congress. In this past March, both Tristan and Gavin paired up to win first place in District 82A CX debate, in which they advanced to the state octo-finals. The Director for Speech and Debate at Abilene High is Scott Stevens, and the Director at Adams is Jill Monroe. Please join me in congratulating all of these students and directors.
All right, y'all. Nice smiles. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you. Stay there. Stay there.
Thank you. Eddie, one, two, three, and one more for good measure. Thank you.
Thank you to all these pres, uh, recognitions. I, I just want to express the board's appreciation to these students, these families, these teachers and sponsors that make these kids stand out and make AISD look good. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here tonight. We are going to go on and have moved on to item six, oral communication from, no? Oh, there's none. The oral communication from the public. I don't think there are any, so we will now move on to the consent agenda. Item seven. AISD board trustees' meetings are preceded by an end of board workshop. Board workshops are held prior to regular meetings, and the purpose of these meetings and workshops of the board is to discuss items to get prepared for potential consideration at future board meetings. Meeting times for board, meeting times for board meetings are posted on AISD website at www-abileneisd.org, and the public is not into attendance. Does a board member need to take an item from discussion, for discussion from the consent agenda? All right, then. Do I have a motion regarding the, I mean, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as presented?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and, by Billy Enriquez and seconded by Rodney Goodman. We'll now take a roll call vote. Danny Wheat?
Yes.
Bill Enriquez?
Yes.
Sidney Earls absent. Angie Wiley, yes. Daryl Good absent. Rodney Goodman?
Yes.
Daryl Zeller absent. The motion passes for zero. Okay. Now we're going to go on to item eight, and that's reports. So the first item, A, Schneider elected. Elected, and we welcome Ryan Wonder. I'm sorry, Charlie.
He left me alone tonight.
I need to tell him. I need to tell him.
All right, y'all, do it tonight. Thank you for having us.
All right, y'all, doing tonight. Thank you for having us. This will be really quick. We have a lot of before-and-after pictures since we're pretty close to the hundred percent completion of the project. I will come back in a few months with kind of a construction completion celebration. We'll be doing probably in June or July, but tonight will just be a quick update of what's been going on. I always mess this up. There we go. All right, so the final construction update, we have the Building Automation System Control Integration at the administration up and going. We have twenty-five doors left to be replaced in May and June. Those have been ordered and are on track to be put in in May and June. And then our punch list items are just caulking, trim, and burnt low-e coating glass replacement, which is under warranty. So as part of the project, we started this back in December of 2019, and I believe we started meeting with you all it was probably in 2018, and the whole thing around it was the LED lighting, the windows and door replacements, the building automation system, the HVAC rooftop units, and then the outside air units. And your projected cost plus projected savings, your cost was twenty-eight point eight million, but the guaranteed savings over the term of the project was estimated to be at about thirty-six point six million with about almost twenty-five percent reduction in your utility. And as of right now, you are currently on track of the savings so far. So for the before-and-after pictures, this is one of my favorites, the before-and-after of Abilene High School. I think that looks really good driving down the road. I take credit, actually, took that picture. The next one is Woodson. This is before-and-after of the left and right, as well as more Abilene High School windows. And then more Madison. And I thought this one's pretty neat, too, at Shotwell Stadium. You can see on the left where the lights were kind of all out, but then on the right, you can see how it's more focused on the actual field. I'm not sure when that picture was taken, but... And then here's one of the classrooms. I don't know exactly which one that is, but you can kind of see the difference of the before-and-after. And then doors. And then this is actually the unit that's in the parking garage here that services this room in this building, and I know before you could, whenever it turned on, heard a big bang, so I know that's taking care of that issue. And then some more rooftop units. And then the building automation system controls up and running. The left was before, and you can see the new on the right. And that's really all I have. And like I said, we'll be back in a few months. The guys are still out working every week, but we'll be back to kind of do a celebration completion and have more pictures of before-and-after and celebrate success of the project.
We are going to miss you, Charlie.
I know. I'll still be back, because we do our performance assurance client services for majority of the contracts, so I'll definitely be back.
We're pleased. They're very exciting changes, and it's been a pleasure having you all around.
That's been a pleasure for me, too. Thank you all so much.
Anybody have a questions for him before he steps away?
All right, thank you.
Lucille Foley, we're excited to hear from her. She is the Director of Career and Technical Education for her regular report to us.
Ribbity, it's gonna be ribbity.
I can't wait.
Do we want to recognize these principals? I'm gonna do that.
Kada, can you help me with Leslie?
Okay, so I did have a chance earlier to share with you the information about Leslie Roberts being named Region Fourteen Tepson of the Year, and Hillary Hernandez being named the Region Fourteen TEPSA Assistant Principal of the Year. Both ladies have arrived, and we would love to have you join us in recognizing them, please.
And I am so sorry we have just kicked in the most sun there.
So I think we're ready for a picture.
I'm very happy you got to be here. Good to have you. That's very exciting.
All right. Stay right where y'all are. Okay. All right, nice smiles. On three. One, two, three. And one more time. One, two, three. Stay there.
One for me. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm kind of liking the laid-back approach tonight.
Now we know who the windbags are on the board. We figured it out. He's watching. I know he told me, so, hi, dear.
Well, Dr. Largent, Mrs. Wiley, board members, thank you for having me tonight. And tonight's just our annual report on career and technical education in the school district. Our mission is in your board book, but it's to prepare students for post-secondary education and/or the workforce, and to assume productive roles in the family and the community. And that's what we strive, is just to create good citizens. The CTE framework, I'm not going to bore you with all of this, but we have sequence of courses, real-life work-based learning experiences, industry-based certifications with the purpose of preparing students for in-demand, high-wage, high-skills careers in Texas. Tonight's overview, you can see that, those items on that agenda. But our statement of non-discrimination, this is just a required public posting, so if you walk into any of our CTE classrooms, you'll see this posted, but this is also required. It's a federal requirement for us to post it in the newspaper and to have it posted here at the building. Funding, our funding is from two sources, federal and state. Federal is the Perkins Grant. The Perkins finances, the budget, can only support adopted programs of study. So if the state doesn't deem it as a program of study or an approved course, then money can't be used to support that class. There are those six uses of funds, including implementation of the programs. We can't supplant, we have to supplement. I'm sure you've heard that. And this is the biggest thing that is a misconception sometimes. We can't pay for teaching positions with Perkins. So it can't fund those salaries. Every two years, I have to submit a comprehensive local needs assessment, and this year is a CLNA year, so I'm in the middle of collecting data for that. State funding is based on contact hours in the classroom, so all of our classes have a minimum of forty-five minutes per class. And the courses, they earn money based on a tiered, weighted funding. I think this is in your board book, this list of courses, and you can see anything that's blue is an advanced course, and it's going to receive more money than one of the courses in black. When we do get the state allotment, fifty-five percent of that money is allocated for CTE specifically, and we just take salaries right off the top, so teaching salaries come off of that. And then basically, what's left is our operational budget. We use that money to purchase curriculum, equipment, supplies, professional development, and to support our CTSOs, and you get to see those students next month. Programs of study, so right now, we have twenty-two programs of study, kind of, and I'll get to that, but they're all listed right here. But a program of study is just a series of courses that lead to an IBC at the end, an industry-based certification. The state has fifty-three. Right here, I say we have twenty-one. The reason we kind of have twenty-one is because we do have a dual-credit program with TSTC for aircraft airframe. But we have typically one to three students who take advantage of that, so it's, we don't have teachers in district that teach those courses. They take the courses at TSTC. And then we have two regional programs of study, cosmetology and drones. Industry-based certifications are typically part of programs of study, and we align those to the region non-labor market. Industry-based certifications, this is an ever-changing list. They just updated it again in December, but it does affect our A through F accountability in the CCMR piece. But we revisit those every year and try to align those with our courses. We have to report on earned, passed, and attempted, so we we get credit for earned. Passed would be like if a student passed, but maybe there's more to it, like fingerprinting or background checks, or, so it's not just the test. Here's a list of all of the industry-based certifications that we currently offer, aligned to each program. That, again, is in your board book. So CTE and accountability. You've heard me talk about completers and concentrators in the past, but the state really wants all of our students to be completers. And by 2026, that's our goal, is to get all of our students in CTE programs to complete three or more courses for four or more credits with at least one level three or four course within that same program of study. So in other words, we don't want them taking a welding class, and then a graphic design class, and then a culinary class. We really want to guide them through that level of classes, courses, within one program. As far as accountability goes, the CCMR piece, this is what you'll see that students can earn a CCMR point for. Of course, the accountability year is a year behind. So graduates for this year, they can earn an IBC plus one course in a line program of study. Next year, the states increase a little bit more, and then by 2026, this is where we need our completers to also pass and earn a program, an IBC. CTE expectations, so we have our strategic priorities, which you're aware of, but the one I have bold right here is just that AISD will develop intentional strategic partnerships. And I'm so thankful, I don't know if Mr. Ashby's still here, I'm so thankful I have a colleague like Mr. Ashby who helps support this at the lift, but the expectation that he and I both have with our CTE teachers is that they actually make industry contact at least once a semester. And that can be inviting outside industry into the classrooms as a guest speaker, it can be outside activities, field trips, internships, or any kind of work-based learning opportunity. Another expectation is aligned curriculum. We know during COVID, we saw the importance of having district-designated curriculum documents. All of our courses embedded employability skills, and then we use Zillow. CTE teachers use Zillow at the middle school and the high school as career and college exploration for four-year plans for their interests. Some highlights, if you'll notice, we have increased participation in CTE courses over the last four years, partly because we opened the lift, and it's a great place to be. We've added dual-credit health science courses at Holland this year. And the next few scholarships, we partner with the Development Corporation of Abilene, and they have allotted money for our students who meet those type-A jobs in our region. And they have given us over the last four years a little over three hundred thousand dollars in scholarship money to help our students with dual-credit, with, after they graduate, with tuition, with equipment. So we're really honored to have them as a partner. Some successful initiatives this year, our Sky Cafe served over two hundred guests in the fall. They're open every Wednesday and Thursday, so if you haven't been out there this year, I think they're serving through the first week in May. Yes, first week in May, so go out there on a Wednesday or Thursday. One of the things they added this year was Grab and Go Holiday Special, so you could, they had the website, and you could order, you know, stuff to pick up, to take with you, so that was a good opportunity. T-Class Grow Your Own Grant, this is the second year. This identifies our future educators, so our education and training teachers have student interns that go into our schools, and we have those partnering teachers who help us identify students who have those skills and qualities of future educators, so we want to recognize them. We're doing that again, Careers on Wheels. We partner with the City of Abilene. These people are amazing, that come out with all of their vehicles, and our second graders get to explore all the opportunities available, and some of those those people are just amazing. They're so fun to come out and work with our second graders. Our graphic design students this year are branding elementary campus mascots, so some of those new mascots you'll see are Alcorta, Martinez, Stafford, Bissetti, Thomas, and Ortiz. So those students are branding those for those principals to look at. And then we have three students on the Leadership Council for Y-Texas. So that's a great leadership opportunity for those students. Some more successful initiatives this year is our AV production students. Gosh, they partner with AISD Live, and we're so grateful to have such a robust internal AV program. You may see those kids on the sidelines. I'm sorry, I just keep passing by. At Shotwell, at other campus athletic events, fine arts events. They were at the State of the City address and got Dr. Waldron. And then they've done some BCMA production videos this year as well, it's just a slew of things for their campus. Hallow High School, some of you came to Hallow High School this year. We held it on February 22nd at the Convention Center, where we had a little over a thousand of our eighth graders in attendance, and about fifty high school students who helped support those ninth graders or those eighth graders going into ninth grade. Our Region Five VRC State Robotics Competition was held at the lift on February 22nd, and we actually have a team advancing to Worlds, so you'll get to meet them next month. And then we just finished our instructional materials adoption, and I think y'all may have voted on that. So that was an initiative this year. Some upcoming initiatives that we're looking forward to are just our national contests with our CTSOs, our Summer Academy for Future Teachers. We held that at Austin last year, and we get to return there and have these students come. The CTE Exploration Camps at the lift. Houses for Healing, that's a new partnership that we've embarked on this year with our Carpenter and Electrical Program. If you don't know what Houses for Healing is, it's a, they provide temporary housing for people who are coming in from area counties for medical medical needs, and often it's like cancer patients, or maybe parents who have babies in the NICU, but they provide houses for them for free, and they have a tiny home community, the north end of Hickory Street, so they just had an open house this weekend, but they have kind of, they've commissioned us to help them with a homeless project. So our students will build a tiny home for them next year for their homeless community, so we've been very excited about getting all of that lined up this year. We are also partnering with Hendrick and Cisco to offer our students an LVN program at Holland. We have three students who will start in May, and I think fourteen that are interested in starting in the fall. It's a dual-credit program, but they could graduate with their LVN license. That's pretty exciting. Updating programs of study this summer, last month, they finally, I think the TEA finally finished updates for those, so I'll be updating them for next year. And then we just purchased CareerCraft. That's a software program that helps us track CCMR and CTE data. So it'll help us probably more, hopefully more accurately indicate what those accountability pieces will be instead of us keeping just manual spreadsheets. Any questions?
How much room do we have to add other programs out there, if we wanted to do HVAC or plumbing?
I mean, if there's an interest with students and there's a need for it, we're ready to make it happen. So we still do have one shop area at the lift that we could expand to. Probably what we would do is kind of evaluate the other programs to see, because there's only so many kids, so if we're going to add this program, we're going to take them from somewhere else, right? So, but there's always room to change, and the... So, but there's always room to change, and the state changes it all the time, and we're willing to hop on board as well.
On middle school students, what types of courses are they exposed to, and that they have to choose from, if any?
Well, in, we have very few in middle school.
Just like, very good to grow, or is it...
Oh, we could, we could definitely grow.
Yeah.
So far, the vision on that has been, we have an eight-period day. We, they, graduates only need 26 credits to graduate, so there's not a need to start them earlier in middle school. They could, we could, we could look at that. Right now, we offer a business course that is an elective. There's several electives in our middle schools, and there's two that are CTE courses, but many that are not, that just receive a local credit, just for exposure to, you know, personal finance or other living skills. But we could certainly look at ramping up that in the middle school. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lucille, very much for coming and taking that time with that. Well, I do want to say, thank you all for your patience tonight. It's like an episode of Designated Survivor, perhaps. We've down the list, but we did know this meeting was coming, and we planned for it, and not, we didn't want to conduct very much business without our, three of our Board members, so thank you for your patience. It happens sometimes, work and family have all happened at the same time, and so we want to be respectful for that, of our Board members who put in, who are, these three are never absent, so we do thank you for that and for being here. And without all being said, there is no further business that I have to read about, so this meeting is adjourned. The time is, I don't know. We'll tell you, 6:39.